The total A went from 1,009,5821 to 1,353,526. So this is up a little, ours is down by about 17,000, so.
Let's stop our feet in front of the table. Now we can say they subsidize our students.
No, for several reasons.
No, that's why, that's why I did it wrong. Okay, Madam Administrator, are we okay to move on to old business policy manual review? Or do we just want to go back to the budget?
I would actually like to go back to the budget because to me this is a lot more pressing than that policy manual review. Is that okay with you?
Sure, so when we were in recess, we were having a minor issue regarding the sound on channel nine. So now we are back up and running, and so we are now out of recess. And we're moving to town administrators' report for the board of selectmen budgets, item Agenda 6A.
So I'm just gonna restart it.
Sure, yeah, we weren't far in this.
So before you are, it's a spreadsheet and you have, these are all the budgets that you'll need to approve. And they'll be sent over to the town council and formulate for the whole town by Friday.
And that will do over the next few?
With everybody, yes, over the next few weeks. Okay, so you have some that are level funded, you have some that have gone up slightly. Those are really like the 2% increases, I just sort of guessed at that, I don't know where you wanna land there. Others decrease, the ones I'd like to specifically discuss in detail are Budget 122 Board of Selectmen, 155 Dad Processing, 192 Public Buildings. I have very brief comments on building insurance, liability insurance, and workers' compensation. And just noticed that Berkeley Dyken Bridge, I did recommend a decrease to 1,500. It's at 1,800 right now, but we're not close to spending that. And it's, it is a minor decrease, but everything helps.
Is it okay before we start discussing it as a board? If we give ourselves 20 minutes for this? And then I want you to go through how you want to present the data to the speaker, okay?
Okay.
Show us yours.
So there's 2% increase for 113, 114. I expect you to kind of look at that with no real problem or questions because they're very simple. Budget 122, I could delay discussion because I do believe that will be quite extensive. 151 is a level for the budget, that's town council. 193 is building insurance, I'll just do the insurances right now. Building insurance, workers' comp, and liability insurance. My only comment is that we are shopping around, so I do reserve the right to give you an updated recommendation on those. But the hope is that they go down. With the one exception being building insurance with the new police station coming on board, we likely will see a decrease just because their worth is substantial. Town reports is a level fund, Ways and Measures is a level fund. Because even giving them a 2% increase is covered in this, in this class. Tuition reimbursement decreased by 2,000, there has not been any request by anybody to use that. I don't know if this might be an advertisement for some, I'm sorry, this will get a little bit of a wrong. This would be an advertisement for people to do that, but I put it down at 2,000 where it was originally.
So we just had the one employee?
Request last year.
Mr. Green, correct?
Correct, and he's been putting through his, he's been doing it, he's been putting through completing his classes. And then of course settlements and judgments are at zero, they're always at zero. And I believe that's all of the ones that I wanted to discuss other than the more detailed ones, so.
So if I may, I think the one that will take up a bulk of our time is the Board of Selectment Budget 122. And it looks like there's about a $23,000 difference. Oh my God, I did the math in my head and I just realized it's right here, I apologize. So, and the reason why I think that we should start on this one is simply because there is an increase more than some of the other increases. And the reason is because of the possibility of adding additional office staff. And so before the board, before we start discussing it amongst ourselves, is there anything you wanted to sort of present about that?
Absolutely, over the last year, not only have I seen Karen's workload, we've made some changes to try to improve it. But I've heard feedback from the board itself. So I thought I would throw this in there so we could talk about it. This is budgeted, doesn't mean it has to go, but the numbers I can row are 20 hours a week. So yes, it would be benefited at $24 an hour. And I did wanna do it benefited because I think it would attract a certain number of worker and employee that could really help provide to a productive office such as ours. So that's what that is in there. There is an increase for our administrative assistant because she, it's a 2% increase, but she gets a lot of it either. Being here with five years, happy anniversary.
Congratulations.
The passports I think that will be going over to the library, but you still, I didn't wanna put it over into the library's budget. I still kept it there, I budgeted the same, three people at $25 a week. There will be four people able to process passports, but the fourth is the library manager who's the backup, staff's backup.
So before we get too far off the beaten path, I think we should address this additional office assistance, staff. Excuse me, couldn't find the word. I also think it is necessary, my concern, and it's necessary because now we have a town administrator before we just had the Board of Health. And so just by virtue of that office being filled, there is more work. And now that work gets put on the administrative assistant, of course, because they're the only one here. My issue and my gripe, if I have one, is in it being a benefited position. I just think that we should start it out, if we are going to do that, with it being a 19-hour non-benefited position. Because as we know in the town Dyken, you have, you know, someone who's a department head, and then you get an assistant, and then in two years, you've got the assistant to the assistant. Like that's the way it works here. So we should start out less with the expectation that the work is only gonna get more and you may in the future need more office hours. And then I will just open this up to my colleagues. But I do think it should be 19 hours to start if we are going to do it and it be a non-benefited position. See, we disagree sometimes, and that's totally fine, we're still here, slept and pacheco.
Yes, I, I do think it should be benefited, I do agree with you.
You are surprising me tonight.
One night, I will go for a fact. I've got other concerns, what I'm going, maybe a 2% increase for us. But I do think that this person aren't a benefit, I do think they already have health insurance. We're not probably getting the caliber of person that I think we should have if the person doesn't have health insurance and other benefits.
I'm certainly not gonna argue with you over that, if you wanna, if that's what we decide, that's fine with me.
And I, there is definitely a need, I've only been on a board of seven months, I can't believe all the work that Karen does.
It's her killer.
I have never seen her before, I can honestly say, I've never seen her.
I hear her just smile a little bit.
Feet on the table or whatever, she's, she's always working hard, we take a look at her. I'm okay with, you know, she works very hard, we look at her desk of all of, all the work. I know because we have a town administrator, your work is an increase because of that, because you got, you two are working together. You two are working together. I do think there is a need for, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to a town administrator earlier this week. I was concerned that it might be more hours, so I was satisfied that was 20 hours. I think at some point it's gonna increase, but I think right now I'm comfortable with 20 hours in a benefited position. That's my speaking, so I'm having a little trouble.
So I conclude.
I don't support adding more staff until we can come up with a reasonable job description, a manageable workload for the administrative assistant, or any other town administrator. I've said from day one, the workload that was in that job description for the town administrator is not manageable. I've offered a couple of times to sit down with you. I honestly believe we need to look at that and come up with something. You're out straight all the time, that carries over to Karen, okay? I don't believe adding another person is gonna make it better. We need to look at where we were before we split off the Board of Health. When we split off the Board of Health and created that new department, there were complaints in town that, wait a minute, this is costing us money. And we said absolutely it's costing money because separate board now, separate office, separate staff, so forth and so on. I don't know how anybody thought breaking off the Board of Health was gonna save money. We were talking about trying to get a manageable workload for the Board of Selectmen and for Mrs. Brady. The next thing we did was hire a town administrator. The job description for the town administrator, my personal opinion, is not manageable. It's too heavy, it's like you're constantly, constantly, constantly trying to juggle stuff that carries over to Karen. I think we need to look at both of those and figure out what is the best way to come up with reasonable job descriptions for these two jobs. I, I really do. Adding another person, I don't think is gonna alleviate the problem. The other thing we're gonna deal with is because of the concerns about the cost when we split the Board of Health. When we brought on the town administrator, we were gonna save the money on procurement because it's part of her job. That was $20,000 more or less. Now we're saying we need 25, more or less, to add another person. I think we're gonna get pushback from the town. That's why I'm saying I think we need to look at existing job descriptions and workloads. Because I think both of these positions are beyond manageable.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't wanna speak for you. This is not a case of you have, obviously you have a lot of work, you know what I'm saying that? But you're not asking your work, Karen can't do, miss, excuse me, Mrs. Brady can't do the town administrator's role. So I don't, that, that doesn't make any sense to me as to how, how that would be helpful.
How well would it be possible by adding a person? So I believe a Board of Selectmen needs two people to function. Just, you, let's just, we are talking about tonight a five-year wish list. How are we gonna get that done? Plus Green Communities, plus any other grant opportunity. I'm looking at the MBD, the Municipal Vulnerability Land. Climate change is coming, I should say, climate change conversations and action items from the governor's office are coming down and expected. We have OSHA requirements, there's so much right at our feet today, we can't keep up, we can't.
And that's, and that's exactly what I'm saying.
And so we've already made lots of changes that have helped, I think. We've changed our minutes process, we've changed, we've really clamped down. If you don't get in here by 12:30 on Monday, you're not on the agenda, and I'm sorry you have to wait. Unless it's a life or death kind of moment. We have really streamlined how we present things to you to try to get all of that work done so that you can have your decision at any time and have all the facts before you so that we can take care of that. We've cut down the number of meetings, you now don't meet every week, you meet every other week. So less than the amount of minutes on Mrs. Brady's plate. We no longer sell Board of Health items, we've moved that over there, we're moving passport. My point is, we've done a lot to try to mitigate and help, and it's still not at a level that's acceptable.
To Jersey, which is like.
Exactly.
Well, I don't think there was a stand to begin with, no, no.
I do a lot of my own administrative kind of things, like I have a vision of how I'd like to do certain stuff, but it requires another staffer, so I'm not putting in on Mrs. Brady, I refuse. She doesn't have the time, she is such a team player that she will do anything for anybody. And I love that, I love that we have somebody as the face of our community to do that, I don't wanna take that away. But at times, like we're in the budget season, we're about to get very active and very crazy. And I just believe strongly we do need another person, just to help manage the two of us, we can't do it all. Plus the different initiatives, we're also growing, this town is growing. There are problems we need to address, there are initiatives we need to start to get a handle on our growth, to get a handle on attracting businesses to come in here, to explore kind of what I call big fish or stuff, to execute the five-year plan-ish, like the five-year wish list that you hopefully devised to them. So I, I really think this is a necessary component. And my only, I just wanna tell you that the budgeted cost of this person is 25,200, that's at 20 hours, and $24 an hour, that would be the max. The budget as a whole went up $23,799.96, so I tried to change some things. If you look at data processing, I know we're not working on that now, but the difference is a $37,949 decrease. So I've quote-unquote "found the money" and I've just transferred it from one budget to this one. So overall, if it impacts the budget, it would actually be less than, if that makes any sense to you.
So if I may, it sounds to me like my, one of my colleagues doesn't, doesn't support it or thinks we should look at other ways, we have one colleague who supports it and I support it.
No, no, you, you misquoting me. What I'm saying to you is, we need to look at where we were when we started reorganizing. Board of Health, alright, additional costs, people were concerned, they're operating, that's fine. Board of Health left this building, left the responsibility of Board of Selectmen on a day-to-day basis. We hired a town administrator. I do not believe that the job description that was written is manageable. And when that was written, if you remember, Mrs. Brady was gonna be 20 hours for the town administrator, which we know is not reasonable, and 20 hours for the Board of Selectmen. And what we know now is with workload, that doesn't work, so we're looking at additional hours. And what I'm saying is that when we talked about the, I'll call it reorganization of the Board of Selectmen's office, we told people certain things. Those certain things haven't come to fruition as far as what we said we were going to do. I'm not questioning the workloads, I'm not questioning the stuff that's being done. I know Mrs. Brady was buried before we even split the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, no question about that. All I'm saying is, when we address the public, we need to have the information to show where we started out, where we went, and where we are now, and why we're asking for. What we thought was a $20,000 savings is now a $25,000 increase because of the additional staff to handle, help handle the workload. That's what I meant by having manageable job descriptions and workloads. Because both of them, they're just buried, they're overloaded, there's just so much stuff that has to be done. And I think the other thing too is, in years past, because we didn't have a town administrator and we only had a town administrative assistant, who had to handle the Board of Health stuff and all of that. The actual Board of Selectmen had to get more involved and had to do more things. That's not happening now, okay? So there's another concern is are there things that the Board of Selectmen can do to help alleviate some of the load? Okay, I'm still doing my own stuff.
We've done a lot of things, like cutting back to, I mean, we're going in circles again, but. So we have five minutes, and I think we should take a vote either way on whether or not to include this, the monies for this Board of Selectmen assisting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget that's been presented, which includes a administrative assistant who would have 20 hours per week at the rate of $24 in benefited, she, she equal, we see benefits. So I recommend that we approve this budget that's been presented to us tonight.
I will step down on the second time, motion, discussion?
Are you going with benefit?
I said.
No, no.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
But you were opposed to that.
Get it done, don't get it out of the circle.
I gave good reasons as to why it should be benefited, you were, you were into it. I do understand that Mrs. Blue asked a concern, and if we can get some additional information that we give a sense of the, at the town meeting, as to why we feel this is justified, I think it's appropriate. We did say it was $23,000 that we saved in agreement. So it wasn't something like we, we saved $23,000 and we gave that money to you, no. It's $23,000 that the taxpayers saved, and now if we had a couple thousand dollars more, the town's gonna get an additional help to help this, now Mrs. Brady. So I feel strongly that we should be hiring an additional assistant.
So, no, we took the Green Communities line out, we, we funded it at zero, and that was the extra $2,000. So basically between those two things, it makes up for the difference.
I also decreased the overturn because the expectation is that less would follow Mrs. Brady's choice, so.
Which is always part of the, that should be the evaluation, of course, given to you. Okay, all those in favor say?
Wait a minute, no, we had to a discussion. I understand what you're saying, but before we go to town meeting, we gotta sell this to the finance committee. Because they're gonna make a recommendation, and hopefully their recommendation and ours is gonna be the same. I think this, the kind of information I'm looking for has to be ready for the finance committee meeting. I'm willing to support this in draft form contingent on getting the information we need to again have manageable work, job descriptions for both these two employees and the new one. Exactly what it is that needs to be done. When we talked the evaluation last year, I volunteered and I asked, I was gonna meet, we agreed to meet, we have not yet. I really think we need to look at this from a management standpoint. We've got two people who are overloaded and have, Mrs. Brady's been overloaded literally for years. I feel the town administrator is overloaded. I think this board needs to look at all of the stuff that got turned over to these two ladies to see what can be taken back and done by the board. We're supposed to be a working board, no, we don't put in 20 hours, 40 hours, whatever. But I really think that we need to look at this because, quite frankly, whatever this board does doesn't cost the town any more money because we just get paid flat money, okay? I've taken on projects, new projects and stuff, and I don't mind doing them. The projects I've taken on, unfortunately, probably with the exception of stormwater, if I didn't do that, that would be dumped on you, literally. So the projects I've taken on and, and the land taking in East, and so that kind of stuff, if I didn't do it, would be dumped again in your direction. It's only because I've been doing it and I continue to do it. But I really think that we need to look to see what we can do to help. And in the end, maybe we don't need 20 hours, but all I'm saying is, that's where I'm coming from. That my, my vote tonight is not, no, absolutely positively, no, that's not what I'm saying. I think we've gotta be credible to the people, I think they've gotta understand because I'm sure they're gonna question, how come and why, so that's where I'm coming from.
Yep, all right, all those in favor say aye, aye, oppose?
Is this, is this vote on the entire list or just the?
Just this.
122.
Okay, alright, because I got a question on where this comes. Okay, I'm gonna abstain from voting because I still want this in the meeting.
Alright, so that was exceptional.
I was just in the sound line, get out, get out now.
Alright, the ayes have it, 122 is settled.
We have to sign, well, you guys have to sign this and then also get to this room.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then the other thing we wanted to discuss as a part of the budget, well, we do need to vote on all the other non-122 lines, but you have here established the wage increase amounts for non-reunion personnel, quickly?
Sure, so you have in your packets just that the planning board voted to provide themselves a 2% increase, so that's in there. But for your non-reunion, so cable and the folks that come on the, making the salary checkers, you just gave them minimum wage at the last meeting. But department heads, anybody do you want to establish a general increase? Everyone's sort of going with 2%, you know, I've had everybody's budget, but they're going with 2% because that's the general thing that has always been done. There are some that have increased more, but I didn't know if the vote wanted to take its hands or just see them as they come in and comment at that point.
So anyone, does it affect?
Anybody not covered by collective bargaining agreement or contract that's already stipulated. Like myself, I have a contract, so.
What about elected officials, does it affect them?
So I have this question about periods, like who monitors the elected officials' contract, wages? Who sets that?
In the past, it has been whatever the people they supervise get, they get, which has been 2%. However, at the department head meeting, when, when a department head said, how much should we budget? You said whatever you want, and I'm thinking, that's not gonna set well. I mean, if one, where they've always gotten 2%. So if a department A says I want 5, and department B wants 3%, what do you do?
I didn't say whatever you want, I said what you think, because we just put them through this evaluation process. And I thought that was the whole reason, that one department head last year was given a wage increase and then we did the evaluation process.
The people we're talking about don't get evaluated, elected officials.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, so they're kind of, you know, poppin' themselves.
That's the people I'm talking about, elected officials.
So I'm actually asking for the non-elected officials, because they do whatever.
Okay, that clarifies that.
Thank you, but the, the people that went through the evaluations, I mean, I think you have a right, you gotta do the evaluation to request what you think they should have.
Which is what they should be doing for a bunch of days.
And it also is an opportunity for them to, you know, interact with their employer.
Okay, so what is the board wanting to do?
Are all the evaluations done?
They are all completed, I have to sit down with two people, and just, they have the toughest schedules, you can, I don't know.
When are we gonna see them?
They're in the office, we were waiting till they'll be done, but we can, they can be here.
Okay, well, put it all together.
Yeah, I've just, it's two more people I have to sit with. And all that goes over is they, you know, if they have questions, it's really their opportunity, like if I got it wrong.
Yeah, that could be on next week's agenda, I think next week.
No, no, I was just gonna put it in here, I was just gonna leave it for you to view. You cannot take it from the builder, that's why, so you gotta put it in.
It's hard to come up with a recommendation without seeing the evaluations.
We'd like to defer that to the next meeting and people can put in what they wanna put in. Someone could too, face upon our discussion, and someone could.
If we all?
You're gonna review the budgets eventually too.
Right, but if we all review the evaluations, we're gonna do it separately, so we don't violate any of them, right? You will finish the last two, wrap up the last two, and you're gonna give us recommendations?
I can if you'd like.
Because then, if you give us recommendations, we will all have seen individually evaluations. And if you give recommendations, in the back of our minds, we will have an idea of a performance, alright? And then we can act on the recommendations.
So we're not gonna do this until we see the, basically what I'm hearing, so we'll, we'll discuss this next meeting.
And I'll get, I'll take care of it.
That was, that was my confusion, by the way, I was just like, is that what we were getting? Yeah, it was like a twisty, windy road that was waiting for us to get to the end, and now I understand.
Every day is a windy road.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that copyright enough or not?
Which is Kitty Sharrow Pro.
This is the longest, winding road.
Yes, that was the, that was the original version. No, Sharrow Pro's version was different.
We should praise them.
So, but we need this board before we move on to, for example, old business. We do need to come to decisions on every other, I know, but 122, correct? So we should vote on that.
Yes.
I got a question on where this comes.
Sure.
And I, I have things to say about 192 and 155. 192 looks incredibly inflated, but that is because last meeting, we took all the energy and non-energy lines that's included in there.
Yeah.
That can even be lower because I finally found out what Civic Central was, that's a segregated schoolhouse. So the funds that it's funded at now, that level should be, and that's my professional recommendation, should be decreased so we can play with that, that line a little bit. That's Budget 192. I took everybody's line budgeted from last year for energy and non-energy, looked at the previous expenditure for them, and made a recommendation. I believe this amount to be incredibly conservative and would look to, it's very tiny print, my recommendation is to lower that number to 75,000 to 80,000.
Which one?
Uh, Budget 192, line 5210, it's the very first one, it's a huge number. I have a note on the comments that says accumulation of all budgets, energy lines, except sewer, mine wreck, and then it gives 75,000 to 80,000. The other thing we can do, and I just was not able to do it, is take a look at all of the energy bills, the total spent last year, because it was broken up so much. Just look at all the bills, add up the whole total spend, and base the number off of that. But that request, department ref- But that request, department request, I think right now will be adjusted in my, uh, year two plans.
So do my colleagues, so I think this is easier if we do it this way, do my colleagues have specific questions about anything not one twenty-two, which we already voted on?
One ninety-two, line fifty-two fifty-three?
Yes.
Where early was the twenty-five thousand?
Stacy Ferry and I have to sit down and, um, now procure the work. We have the money, it arrived, we have to, but we can't do anything until the.
Don't spend it.
Well, we can't, we can't do anything till the police get out of there, like their delays are our delays.
Which I have this.
Also, um, when that money came through, there was also money for council one agent.
I believe she's purchasing a dishwasher, she sent in a, a procurement form listing the, you know, that she went out and got free quotes, and, um, so she should be on her back.
And the last question is department nine twelve, where it is coming?
Yes.
Um, I know that, um, you're planning to put this out to bid, and I'm hoping it's gonna be low. Are the numbers that we are looking at right here, based on that audit that we had where we got whacked?
I increased it because of the audit, we had to do a transfer of funds, exactly.
So I'm in the Tico.
I can look on, I reviewed all the budgets on SARS.
So I am accepting motions for the remaining budgets to approve.
I'm so sorry, but before you get there, data processing, one fifty-five, I can only lower this if we move away from terminal services.
May I make a comment about that?
Yes.
Uh, I, I think you and I, we've, we've encountered some of the difficulties, I mean, you could barely get a password reset with it for your email account, it is three years later, that has not happened. Um, I, my biggest issue, and, and, and I would never, um, denigrate someone's business, um, because I know they take that seriously. My issue has always been inconsistency, not for any other reason other than every time I call, I get someone different. And so there's a, there's sort of a lack of consistency in the services that are offered because it really is a crapshoot on who answers the phone and is assigned to your issue. Um, so that alone, when I went through the website renovations and all that, and had to deal with different email related issues with terminal exchange was enough for me to happily support, um, parting ways, hopefully annually with terminal exchange.
The plan that I've devised, and thank you to Sergeant Foreman helping me, um, we are go, right now we pay under fifty dollars per email address, which is incredible, it's amazing, that thing goes way out.
No, it's fifteen dollars.
Oh, I thought it was a hundred.
But that, that is also expensive, correct? No, but that's still way more expensive than it should be.
So we're gonna bring it in-house, which should be free, um, other than buying the server, which we have to do anyway.
Much more secure.
Everybody gets much more secure, everybody gets the same email domain, it is not dpd@concast.net, it's townofdyken.com, period, for every department.
Which is good for things like public records, um, open meeting law, um, and things like that. Also will allow us to easier keep track of our email address inventory and who is an employee, who isn't an employee, who should have an email address, who should.
Right, so, and it's internal, it's all on us, um, and we have to purchase backup software, which isn't a big deal. It's not anywhere near what we're paying right now. The other thing this involves is to not have the Office 365 accounts that we have right now, which is, you know, they're great, they're great. Our people are not using the benefits to them, so it's not worth the exorbitant fee that we pay to have this. So we would now be purchasing software, like you, sort of like what you would do at home, that you just buy, you know, to have it to office suite. But it's more economical for us and makes sense for what we do here, what we need. So I'm very happy with moving with this to this other individual, he's in Somerset, very close by, not dealing with somebody scheduling two weeks out because they're in Boston. Um, no two hundred dollar fee of, a, a visit, uh, no worries about which building is covered and which isn't, because that was a surprise to me. Um, this covers everybody and it's, it's very important.
I think it's really important, as someone who has had to navigate the tricky terminal exchange waters, um, I think it's very necessary. Um, and I think having someone close by, um, who will, one person who will know our issues, who will understand our systems and know our computers and also our employees and the types of questions that they tend to ask, um, about things. I think it's, it's a no-brainer, and I will point out that, um, this is a big decrease from one year to the next, no improvement. So, um, I think it's gonna be a positive.
Will this affect the town's website and managing home?
No, totally different, the only thing that we've talked about is the, um, security certificate, which would be an annual cost. I've built that into this because that's just something we need to do. Uh, but we've also discussed, instead of paying, we pay for two domains right now, we pay for townofdyken.com and then dyken-datnet.gov. We talked about switching email to just one domain, which would be shared, you know, we would only pay once for the dyken-datnet.gov. And dot gov is, you pay a premium because it means it's the best of the best, and you've been vetted by the federal government. Um, so we've talked about that, it's just, it's a little nerve-wracking to think that you have to change your email when so many people have it.
I don't think that that's that big of a deal because we would update the staff directory on the website and people would know.
Right, and then you would put in your own messages, you know, this email is going to be closed as of whatever date. So my recommendation to you is to approve this with understanding that we will be trapped with another network administrator company at a much lower rate. Begin the changeover and cancel our, not cancel, but just write out our contract with terminals early until the end of this full year. Give them notice that we're not going to continue with everything that's going on, so.
Alright, so which we would do as part of the block of non-one twenty-two that we still need to approve tonight.
Department one thirty-five, there's only a one-line entry on the top line, I was just wondering about the rest of that.
What was the department?
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five. I don't have one thirty-five, what's the name, such a thing?
Town of Calum.
Town of, oh, that's not part of this document, that is for her request whether this has been changed.
Okay, we'll let, we'll have to act that.
Oh, I thought we were doing all of the board selecting control tonight.
You are doing that, that one is not under, that was for the next item on my report of, uh, the amounts for non-union personnel, but she's doing it. You're doing that next week and she's missing it back.
We don't have a meeting next week.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so this piece of paper, just regatta?
At this time, yes.
This, but keep it, keep everything, I put it in a.
Future discussion.
Budget folder, that everything's gonna go in.
Okay.
Okay, so I am entertaining motions pursuant to, but, board of selecting budget lines other than one twenty-two. Board of selected budgets, excuse me.
All of the ones on this list, except one twenty-two?
Yep, we are meeting that one. So entertaining motions.
Do we break it down to each one? So if I make the motion to approve, um, this budget, one thirteen town meetings, for example.
We did the whole list.
One fourteen moderator, one fifty-one town council, one. One fifty-five.
We shouldn't reach in processing.
I agree. One ninety-two, uh, public buildings, one ninety-three building insurance, one ninety-five town reports, two forty-four weights and measures, two ninety-four progress tree, four twenty-nine group of dyken bridge, nine twelve workers comp, nine twenty tuition reimbursement, nine forty settlements, nine forty-one judgments, and nine forty-five liability insurance.
We have a motion and a second discussion, I did wanna tell you a funny joke, so the chairman of the group community is committing, I thought we were gonna kick out of that because it was just insane. Um, had posted, once we became a designated group community in like a top in Facebook group, like how great it was and like all that information. And somebody wrote, um, oh, the town of Dyken got a hundred forty-three thousand dollar grant, that'll pay for the electricity for the Dyken, the Berkeley Dyken Bridge for one year, and so I was just looking and I'm like, oh, it's fifteen hundred, okay, touche.
You need to look at a lot more of it.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you, but your work is not done because we are leaving. Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, the ayes have it, now motion passed, this conference even, thank you. Okay, your work is not done, madam administrator, we're going to discuss policy manual review, section seven oh five through eight oh nine. And in the interest of time, ten minutes.
You want a second one?
Oh, yes.
I'm gonna go as quickly as possible. Um, so this is involved, this crop involves, um, as you know, this is a plasma review, it goes, it's one of my goals to review, uh, the whole policy manual and make recommendations. Um, so these, this crop involves a handful of other department heads. Um, some of them I think that we should retain or at least take a look at, get a consult with the department head that's sort of in charge of it and then draft something new or do whatever they, um, or, you know, consider, whatever they are recommending. For seven oh five, requisition and purchase orders, we definitely don't do purchase orders, I know that the town accountant does have a system, she has a form. I have no idea if what the policy says is actually being executed too. And to be honest, it's really for her department, I don't know if the board of select must have a whole policy that how the town accountant's going to get a purchase order. Um, I would just like to review with her and retain or do what she recommends, um, to make her life easier, however that happens.
Are we gonna institute a purchase order system, is that what you're saying?
Okay, well, this exists because it was voted, but I don't really care for purchase orders as a municipality because we shouldn't be kind of doing anything. But she has a mechanism for it and it's working because other, the cable community actually has to use it, so like why mess with it? So I just wanna sit with her and see, what do you think about this gen, do you wanna change it? Do you think the board should have its own policy or can you just have your own processes to be able to, so that's my.
So would it be a town line policy?
I, I think it would just be however the town accountant, I mean, she's not gonna pay her bill if she's not on board, so however the town accountant would like you, the department, to put together a purchase order if you would need it, should just be what's required to. The task orders, change orders, and amendments, I know you're all familiar with this because you've been doing this with the public, uh, with the police station, but I would say strike this actual policy, it's covered events, general law, procurement laws, same with emergency procurements. Um, seven oh eight, this, we don't have anybody that is actually qualified to do this, this talks about identity, that credit card payments processed through the town are processed through third party. They are not our, our deal, um, I would like to take this off the books. Um, fraud prevention and detection policy, this was another one that kind of commits the town to knowing a little bit more than we would actually ever know because we don't process the credit card payments, it's a third-party vendor. Um, but it does hit upon fraud detection, which is a very important thing. Um, and I think we should strike what's written and replace it with a statement on whistleblowing, um, or, you know.
There's something in writing about this, we issued it.
Do you know what you're all about?
It should have been in that policy.
I don't remember if it was a policy, but it came up, we issued a statement on fraud and protecting the town's, um, assets.
So there's, there's a blurb in this policy, but it doesn't, it's not substantial to, based upon everything else that's in the policy too.
I've got a feeling it's posted somewhere, in, or in several places, somewhere, there is some. We just have to see what's there, maybe add on to it or something.
So we want to be striking this route, to be placement.
I would say you'd strike these because it puts the town.
We have no replacement, yeah, but we have no replacement.
But it's making the town do certain things that you're not really.
I'm thinking the replacement is in this notice that I'm thinking of, I'm thinking.
Well, you can hold on this one, we can, you know.
Yeah, we may not act on everything, I just wanna get through the.
Seven ten, seven eleven, these have to do with financial policies, we sort of did these with the financial statement that we prepared December two thousand seventeen or early January eight thousand eighteen. Um, so I would say either send a spin going for a recommendation compared to the financial statement that they also voted on with you and see what, what, what's left, I guess, that we need to, um, keep that around. You liquidize regulations in this is currently inaccurate, and so this needs to be stricken, we need to be.
You don't say.
Yeah, very inaccurate, so we need to review and edit. Block party regulations is something I'd like to speak with the police chief, um, I don't know if there's a lot of block parties here in Dyken.
I think they're in like the woods, like, you know, one's gonna listen to a recommendation. Now you're giving everyone an idea.
Um, banner regulations, that goes along with signage and this needs to be mentioned.
Do you think that falls under can, uh, excuse me, so I'm in the Tico, uh, as, uh, under the signage bylaws?
We do know signage by law.
That, that was a banner, right?
I believe it does.
So I would say, strike this, or you have something else.
Yep.
The liability form, so this liability form was a little strange to me, I, at first when I read it, I was like, oh, this is a great thing to have, but it's holding the town harmless for somebody participating in a town function, like if we were putting on the Easter egg list.
You can't waive that kind of liability, I don't care how many times a person signs.
Right, exactly.
So I like to strike it.
Okay.
Um, fuel storage license, I did check this with the fire chief, he said the state fire marshal's, um, office handles this, so let's let them and not put ourselves under any undue burden. Keno license, so I found this to be rather restrictive, talking about parking spaces and we were gonna get involved. The mass lottery, um.
They have regulations.
Why would we subject ourselves to making sure that everybody with a keno license has a certain number of parking spots out there?
The only thing we have to do is when somebody applies for it, like we did recently, we voted to allow them to have a keno, period.
And you let them know, hey, we have a problem with this because of X, Y, and Z, if you do attempt.
So can I ask you a question, so if we strike this, I'm just giving this as an example, if we strike eight oh six, the keno license from the policy manual, and then didn't replace it, like we didn't even make mention to the fact that the lottery, the mass lottery has their own regulations, those would still prevail, right?
Of course, yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure, that's.
Yeah, all they ask us to do is, is, you know, so-and-so wants to have one, do you approve any of it?
It's very simple, I mean, it just comes here, yep, no problem, you really only have to say something if you have an issue, otherwise it goes.
I'm not making a suggestion that we should always, when we strike something, have reference to the law or the regulation that prevails, but like me regarding keno licenses, I might not have an idea if an issue came up, and I doubt I would, but I'm just making a statement. It might be helpful to at least refer to like where we'd be finding the information.
So you would only ever know because the state would have to, because you can't go in there and say, I'd like to inspect your machine, you can't. You would only ever be notified by the state, there's no way for us to be able to do that, or D O R, D O R.
We only notify, where are we notified if this violation and that license by the state is suspended?
Or in the case of we had a liquor licensee where the A B C C held, withheld their license, so, um, there's various.
I'm just curious, I'm okay with striking it and having no reference at all, that's kind of the style.
I agree.
Hawkers and peddlers, you have a bylaw for this.
Yep.
Um, motel operation permit regulations, my comment was, is this applicable?
Do you want to strike the bylaw for hawkies and peddlers?
We are, we are.
No, strike, we have a bylaw.
Policy refer to the bylaw.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry, that's me being at the end of the policy. Okay, I'm upset.
That's when like the little punctuation really matters.
Um, motel operation permit regulations.
We used to have cabins on Route Forty-four, so they weren't motels, but they were cabins.
The ones that are still there, those little cottages?
Well, there's only one actually in the town of Dyken, uh, and they're, they're actually permanent residents now. But my thought was, what about Airbnb's?
So, yes, definitely, um, and there's some kind of coming out, there's a legis, it's special legislation, short-term rentals, and.
D O R just issued something at the MMA that came out.
There was an email right before, or late last week.
So maybe we need some kind of a bylaw that, that relates to some kind of short-term rental housing, whether it's a day for a hotel or, but in other words, don't identify whether it's a B and B or a whatever.
A B, yeah, yeah.
Just, just, because I think the Airbnb, the D O R, I think, isn't there a tax applied to it if it's, so that's another thing.
It was not, short-term rentals on the whole nationwide were not being taxed like a hotel or a motel. And a lot of communities that are destinations rely on that income, and. And people, they weren't getting it because it was just a private citizen that was renting out. So now all this legislation's coming out. Uh, the city of Chattanooga has excellent zones.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so anyway, um, what I, so what are we doing here? Where, are we gonna send this over to the Board of Health or?
No, 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 no.
We're gonna rewrite this to address.
We can, we can do that.
I think we can strike this one, but I think we need something to comply with what came out from D O R on short-term rentals.
So strike this one and then draft a short-term.
And I just think like motel, I know they still exist, so I'm not making a statement like they're, they're like a dinosaur. But I do think Airbnb is more prevalent for nowadays, rather than like a standard motel. Um, because they're just cheaper to operate, it's like your property that you already own and you're just renting it out.
They're making.
Right, but if you say short-term rentals, you include everything.
Oh, no, and I totally agree, no, I totally agree, it should be vague and sort of an all-encompassing umbrella.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we have to do, to comply with that, that legislation.
I'm hoping somebody like Plymouth has already noticed something.
We could, that might be a good place to look, any sort of touristy, cave-y, Cape Cod, um, area.
We hope it has some B and Bs and so does, um, not Airbnb's, but real B and Bs, so does Seco. Cause Seco's also the hotels, but there are, uh, there are B and Bs over there.
Um, eight oh nine.
Taxi licenses.
I was thinking we could.
I don't remember, we're setting a taxi.
No, yeah.
It has to be, so taxi licenses.
We've never had like a taxi.
The whole regulations, the, the whole document needs to be published into these statements. So my question was, was this, I doubt it.
No.
It's a huge cost, which deters towns from developing that much, it's pretty sad. And now with Uber and things like that, it's sort of a dynamic. Um, so.
No, it was never advertised and I'm pretty sure we can strike it.
So then it's not the element that you're talking about yet.
Yes.
So thank you very much, that is my new section for tonight.
Madam Administrator. So regarding this, instead of us going one by one, is there any way? And I'm asking you a sort of a logistical question, where we could, since it didn't seem like there were any, um, there was no opposition to your recommendations on each policy? If we could just, uh, approve your recommendations as presented this evening in one, and just for all of them?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
With the, with the exception, cause my, my recommendation for motel says applicable, so I would just say strike, is that what I heard?
Yeah, we could strike that.
So that would be stricken, taxi licenses stricken, and everything else gives an action word. Other than banner, uh, banner regulations is also stricken, so, um.
So the motion would be something like to approve the recommendations as presented this evening with the, with, uh.
With the.
And striking eight oh eight and eight oh nine.
And eight oh three.
Eight oh six.
No, eight oh three says strike.
Oh, it does, yeah, oh, sorry, I missed it, I saw secure.
And eight oh six says strike, so that's okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Streamlined.
Entertaining questions. I was, no one had done it yet, that's all that was on my face. I was like, what is she so excited about?
Something in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the town administrator's recommendations as submitted tonight, the policy manual review. And the co-rangements, seven oh five through eight zero nine.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, did we read them on seven oh nine that we were gonna strike before we replaced it?
No, that's a hold, so her recommendation was to hold that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I'm thinking it might be posted on our door, or somewhere near our door.
It's probably either across the, in the copy machine or on that, um.
Cause it talks about the responsibility of all town employees to protect the town's assets or whatever. But, and it probably needs to be explained, but there's something in writing. Alright, so these are who has recommended, right?
Alright, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you very much, Madam Administrator. Um, do you, just quick question before we move on, are there any other sections that we haven't checked out?
Uh, I know there's a couple more, uh, but, I know, we're close, we're close, we're close.
Okay. Okay, good work, good work.
We have to be close, I got intentions, I made.
Correct, and then we have to start the process of like if we need to rewrite anything, which I'm happy to assist you with. Um, we will get that done, it will be a long tactic, we have time for it, by the way.
Good. You take that one.
Sit down, the board's already settled.
Okay, next on the agenda this evening is to review and approve the job description for the animal control officer. Um, I did go through it, I personally did not see anything that leaked off the page in terms of, um, something that may not be applicable to what their actual description of their job is. Um, so, did, did either of my colleagues have anything to say about the, the A C O job description this evening?
No, I agree with both also, I have a sense, it's satisfying.
And I, when I separated the two jobs, because we gotta do animals, that's the two, I went to the state requirements. And what you're looking at is the best combination of two separate job descriptions, if that makes sense.
No, I think you did a fantastic job, Jen, I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, hearing, oh, I'm sorry.
I think the motion that we approve the job descriptions for the animal control officer and animal inspector at the same time.
I try to wish you.
And animal inspector.
Senator.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? And again, I do just wanna thank our colleague, uh, Selectmen Huart, for working so diligently on this.
Yeah, my understanding is that would've helped review this and there were a couple of very minor, minor, minor edits, but they accepted it too. As presented, would you have to know?
And I don't wanna belabor the point, but I wanna thank everyone on the dais, Mrs. Brady, the entourage minister, Arastina, as well as our board, um, for getting through the job descriptions for our non-union personnel. Because now, um, and I'm not saying anyone's gonna leave, but as people leave and people, it's very clear what the duties are for these jobs. And I think that in addition to this, along with the, um, evaluation system that we set up at the suggestion of the finance committee that it has been reviewed, and this is what we mean when we say professionalizing things, so, thank you very much.
I would just comment also that on the animal inspector, that comes up shortly.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a, uh, town recommendation to the state, so reports and things have to be filed, that's why there's addresses. Everything is referenced in there.
Mm-hmm. Alright, let's take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes, good work. Next on the agenda this evening is the town council rules and regulations. We have done, this is our third meeting, this is our third quote-unquote reading, um, and I will accept motions to adopt.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town council rules and regulations.
Senator.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Madam Administrator, would you like us to sign it now, or do you want us to wait?
Well, I think it's, you know, that's always, um, more.
I have no problem, just making sure. Thank you, Mrs. Brady. Good work, colleagues. Thank you, okay. Thank you, Selectmen Pacheco. Next on the agenda this evening are the five-year wish lists. Uh, I believe we have an update, I'm not sure what this update is, so Madam Administrator, if you can take it away.
So, um.
Oh, I think I have one. It's letting me reach it goes.
Yes, and then the, this one is just the compilation of repeated requests. It doesn't constitute everybody's request, but the compilation of repeated requests from various departments. And then I threw in mine as well tonight, um, just to showcase that, we are on the same page. So tonight, I don't know if you wanna do this, um, formulate the, the top however many that you want to, you kind of go after in the next five years. What do we, what are the priorities for us to get the ball rolling to after?
So if I may, what I have seen are, there seems to be some sort of a consensus amongst us. Um, that we need a library or we need to address the current library in some manner. Uh, the other thing I've seen is, um, we need to address the allocation of space. I don't know how to phrase this, an expansion, whatever, uh, verb we'd like to use, um, at Fire Station One. So I know those were big for me. We do, I believe, need to do something with space at Town Hall. And I know on Selectmen Pacheco's, I'll give you an example, he says, have all town buildings ADA compliant. Absolutely, a hundred percent. And that would include Town Hall as well.
So I have an idea.
Sure.
We take all of our municipal buildings, we hire a company, a firm, that will go in, detail our efficiencies in each. And I don't mean that in a bad way, but like, what are we lacking?
Yeah.
Um, detail our deficiencies by building, and then we have what our punch list is across the board. And we can take something that's manageable, maybe can be done in the operating budget, like something as simple as our ADA compliance to bring up our doorknobs. We can, we can take care of buying new doorknobs and having our.
Lovely.
Right, and having them installed, that's something we can do in the operating budget, that's fairly quick, um, versus building an elevator, for instance.
First of all, I can do our doorknobs as well.
Um, we don't have to hire anybody, Mr. Gales is qualified to do this.
So that's for ADA compliancy, but I mean like, or ADA compliance, but for like everything. Everything that are like, your windows are being.
When I met with him, he met with, I don't know, did you guys meet with him? He called me up one time, he was meeting with all the town people, I assumed he met with you.
He did.
Um, and he talked about different things, and based on what he told me, he's qualified to identify.
He's qualified to identify, ADA compliance matters absolutely, but I mean like efficiencies.
You're saying like a third party?
Like everything, everything that needs.
Just upgrading.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm asking for ADA compliance, and I think Mr. Gales is qualified. I, I bring it to a lot of the meetings, we have these conversations all the time.
I think we start with Mr. Gales, and if there's something he can't do, then we hire somebody, but.
So my, my idea is to encompass all of our, you had just listed a new fire library, new fire station, Town Hall space, and ADA compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Problems.
Oh, and the last one, number five, the sewer, everybody had that on their list.
Oh, expansion of the town sewer system.
Yeah.
Uh, public sewer system.
Mm-hmm.
Included in, um, ADA also should be grounds because of the field. Um, and that field with the, um, for example, we had a graduation there last year. And, um, I realize you can get down on the field if you go way around. Um, but, but while you can sit up here and watch the graduation, my only thought is, when that was built, obviously, there's no railings to walk down all those steps. I mean, and it served as breakfast, but since we're gonna have that around for many ways to come, that should be on the list, just to see what we need to do. Cause it's, it's such an asset to the town, I agree.
Let's, I don't wanna get too much into potential projects, I, I think the point of this was just, as the CEOs of the town, we come to some sort of consensus on what are the five things.
Buildings and grounds, when it comes to ADA.
Yep.
So that's number one on our list here, ADA compliance for buildings and grounds.
I mean, I don't, I don't like giving them numbers, cause I think they're all equally.
No, it's not priorities, just, we're formulating a list, so.
On top of that, I have seven there.
Yeah, so Fire Station, ADA compliance, uh, like Town Hall space, space issues, um, sewer, public sewer expansion, and a new library.
Highway garage needs something.
I, and I put that in mind.
So that, that's why I wanna do this building inventory needs list.
The highway garage.
So that, we are gonna get this report of, you know, really for, this is what your service level should be. And here's what you need to do to bring it up to that service level.
So I think these six things are, should be like, I, I don't know how to prioritize them, but that should, those should be, I think, what we agree on.
Agree, agree with what you're saying, we don't have to prioritize them, several verticals will have horizontalist.
That's why then we can chip away at things.
As you make progress with certain areas underneath those items, you can list where you are and.
And the reason why I agree with your approach, Selectmen Huart, is simply because I think if we do the good old checklist approach, which is what I personally love to do, then we will get one thing done and it'll be like three years later. So I think if we chip away and do things at the same time, cause we can walk and chew gum. And, and some of it might be, we study this thing while we're doing this other thing, we're actually doing this other thing. Or we're studying something else, that's fine.
So in my, my mental list, I also operate on checklist, my mental list right now is sewer expansion study, okay, great. That's item one that we're gonna kind of tap over the next five years. But listing all of these buildings, there's no way we're gonna be able to build a library or fire station or allocate, allocate Town Hall space, which would require our major renovation in five years. So that's, that's where I'm saying, let's give ourselves a measurable thing.
Correct.
Like, go get a company to determine our needs.
Determine needs, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Hire somebody to do that, okay, so that's, alright, that's around that.
But I'm just, what I'm not saying is, I think if we do the checklist mode where we prioritize everything, it's gonna be where we only focus on one thing, none of the other things make any progress. And I'm not saying they all have to get done, but.
That's why if we have a vertical, a horizontal list, so one, the first call, the first heading is buildings and grounds and ADA compliance. Then we can have Mr. Gales working on that, and then let's say.
Buildings needs assessment.
Assessment, somebody working on the Town Hall space, meaning this building, another group, and you could put like names under them and assign those tasks to certain people, so that everyone's working at the same time.
That would be good for us too, Selectmen Huart, like as Selectmen, like, you know a lot about, I'm just making this up.
Yeah.
You are very involved in sewer and stormwater, you might be good for that. I, I like Town Hall, I know it needs new carpeting and drapes, so I take over that. Like, I'm just thinking of things.
I don't know, we need the drapes, but perhaps the carpet.
So. Yes.
Why are we hiring somewhere, because we have Jonathan Gale for the ADA compliance. The library, that's in the process, when, uh, when it comes up, it comes up. You know, until three years when they decide, once the running guys are doing, we get thrown that list. Uh, space in the Town Hall, I mean, we, we had Mr. Ag.
We're not making any headway though, I feel like every time.
No, that totally is odd.
Eight million other things that we have to get done or have to think about.
But that's what the list is for, it reminds us.
So that's why I like, I like the idea of a private company telling us about building needs assessment, because they're gonna tell us things that we're not even, we're not even gonna be thinking about. Because we're gonna be thinking of just by nature of us. Cause we are living in, you know, this is our life every day, we're dealing with whatever, what our, what our main issues are. Like, we need new bathrooms.
Oh, I, I, I totally agree.
Like, in a big way. But I'm sure there's something about the bathroom that we're not even thinking about, like venting, right? Where does it vent? I don't know that yet, sorry. And do we put this on the building commission? I, I don't know.
But like, this is where I do think we should prioritize, like, clearly making Town Hall ADA compliant is more important than we're doing the bathrooms. Which I'm not saying you, you know what I'm saying.
No, no, no. But like, making ADA, making Town Hall ADA compliant is a nice, idealized space of like, you're focused on Town Hall.
I know, I know what you're saying.
Your, your compliance on, on Town Hall.
It makes great things up that we're not thinking about right now.
Right. What happens when you need to make the highway garage ADA compliant? You know, like.
What do you mean by that?
It's, I'm just, it's not manageable for five years to do all of this at once, that's why, like, in-house. So to get a true building needs assessment, you need to hire an outside vendor to actually do it. Jonathan can do the ADA part, but everything else that needs to be done.
You're talking about space needs improvement, yes, yes.
Your, your roof on Town Hall's gonna need to be, this is totally made up, this is not. Your roof in Town Hall needs replaced in five years. Who, who knows these, we know that the old Town Hall's brand new. We know that the old Town Hall's brand new, we know that, I mean, Van Gogh said if we kept that, we know that that was basically brand new, but how old is the prime time roof? The, the old, the old police station, that roof, you know, like, things like that. So that we can figure out and anticipate, in ten years' time, we're gonna need to redo this. In, in five years' time, we're gonna need to do-
So I think, I think we're getting too much into who's gonna do what. We just, we just wanted to discuss what we all agreed on tonight. We have a list of six things that we, all came up on all of our wish lists, and that's what we should do. Fire Station, ADA compliance, Town Hall, space, sewer, library, highway garage.
I think, just as we said with Mr. Gales, before we hire anybody, we've got to involve JMAGA. We should involve the departments that we're actually talking about, libraries, as, as Mr. Pacheco said, that's already in the words. Um, Mr. Ferry, those should just be initial people, and say to them, this is what we're doing, we'd like to know your thoughts. Once we know what their thoughts are, then we can, we're going to go with a, hire a professional and say, this is what we already know, we need you to look at what they're saying, and now we need you to look at it and tell us what's missing and what do you recommend.
I'm just giving this up, you're, that's, that's what I want to have.
I do have one last thing, and then we're moving on, because it's almost nine thirty.
Is that what you want to do?
No, no, I, I took that. Courtesy. Um, we should back up, so the town administrator and I did go to, you may already know this, I apologize. I, I was not the one to tell you, so I know, you did know this, but we did go to a sewer commission meeting, and at that commission meeting, the sewer commission did vote unanimously to support a survey of possibly extending sewer down from 138. So when she alluded to that, that's what she was talking about, I don't even know if anyone caught that, but, good news. So that is what she was referring to.
Did they talk about down 138 or up from Sunset?
Down 138 from current, and it would stop at Hart Street, is the scope we identified to study.
Police station to Hart Street, right?
Hart Street, is the scope we identified just to study. I'm thinking that as the study goes on, there will be some recommendations of doing some other things, that's just my thought.
Absolutely.
That's the, that's the scope out there, so that's one reason to do the study, study. Because it's gonna be more to come up than go through gravity, okay.
So-
So we're not, we're not a contract with our, someone to do the work yet, work.
No, no, yeah, we, we just need to-
We're gonna establish-
We're taking six items that we're gonna go to address, I think we ought to review this on a regular basis, this, this, maybe a general item, maybe every three months. And I, I think-
Like a quarterly thing?
I do, with Mrs. Cool, like we said, maybe we should, maybe we should assign some of those, do we still want ourselves?
That's what I would, that, I was just thinking that, because then it's like a project, and we already have that system of the board approving someone's sort of do a project, and in that way, it's not, to Selectmen Goulart's point, it's not, the town administrator has to do everything, because it's just not possible. These are projects that are, in my personal opinion, outside the scope of like, the town administrator's everyday duties. She's, of course, interested in improvements to the town and their infrastructure, but I wouldn't say that it's your job to make sure we get a new library, like, no, that's just-
This is all beautiful, yeah.
We will help you to make sure it gets done.
Mr. Pachico said he's had conversations with Mr. Gales, so he's familiar with ADA stuff, so they might give the team initially.
I would like to work with Mr. Gales.
Um, I would certainly work with the, as you said, the connection between st- water is water, whether it's drinking water, sewer water, or stormwater, and, and we have a committee. So, you know, that, that's certainly in the mix, um, but anyhow. Yeah, share the, share the work.
Oh, absolutely.
And report back periodically to the town administrator through our agenda things.
Oh, absolutely, so, if I may, so I don't plan on doing this whole list tonight, but I know that you work pretty close with Mr. Ferry, so would you be willing to be assigned to the highway garage and work with him on that?
True.
Or, you know, over however long it takes.
True.
And Selectmen Pachico, you're okay with ADA compliance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to give me another one? So we're gonna take two.
So I, I didn't mean to take sewer, but that's just, I went to the meeting, so I'm okay doing that. What other one would you feel comfortable doing? You're, you're pretty close with the library.
He's gonna do ADA, but you can-
He's, yeah, he's doing that.
I wouldn't mind working with, I mean, the library also.
Perfect.
I know, I know you just mentioned that you're interested in space in the Town Hall, is that?
Yeah, I, I, I'd be happy to like, work with, um, the building commission on that, for sure. Now, we have one tall task left. Selectmen Goulart, would you like to work with our police fire chief?
Oh, wait a minute, which ones? Who's doing building needs?
I just put, I-
Parks and Parks House, that's-
Yeah, that was kind of like an umbrella term, so it's-
So where did you, where are you in?
So Ken's doing ADA.
Right.
I'm gonna work with Town Hall. In library, I'm gonna do Town Hall and Sewer. Are you okay with doing highway and fire station with chief? Our police fire chief, okay, perfect. See that? Progress, folks.
If I can get his name right, I'm like, I look in my-
They look still.
And Mike was down the road from me.
And so I think Selectmen Pachico's point is valid, in order to give us, you know, everyone works best under timelines, so we can do a quarterly update of our board of selectmen meeting like, every three months. So our next first update would be sometime in March, or April, yeah. Is that okay, town administrator?
It is, my only comment is, I do have some things going on in most of these. So I'll just email the appropriate selectmen and talk about that.
Sure.
And, I know you've been involved with the letters, haven't you?
She's the one that I'm not.
And you know, like you said, we can't build all of this stuff in the next five years, but at least we'll have a foundation where, as time progresses, hopefully we'll get some of these issues addressed, and the work we're doing is not from nothing.
I call them shell-ready plans, right? You're like, oh yeah, we need this, like, it's time to do it.
它可以 updated in the future if things change.
And we're planning ahead, which I think is a major, so, great. Next on the agenda this evening is to review the final committee draft for a police station plaque. My, so, I was a little confused why they changed it, because we never officially made any recommendations that we voted on. Um, what I will say about this plaque is, I actually really like the plaque, and the only thing that I, I would like to see changed is the board of selectmen. I don't understand why we chose, I mean, I guess they were the board that was there.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
They were the board that was there, like, when they had the idea to, I'm assuming this is what happened, to do the police station. Um, and I don't mean any slight or any negativity or disrespect, but what I would say is, there is a value in being the board that's present when you actually get the project done. So what I would say is, when we did the construction sign back in 2017, it was Selectmen Taylor, Selectmen Goulart, and myself were on the construction sign. Um, and I felt that was appropriate, because we were the board that helped the police station building committee be able to break ground on the police station. So in theory, we were the board that helped the police station go from an idea on paper and in people's brains, to an actual public works project. And we supported it, we worked with the building committee, um, to make it possible to help bring that project to fruition, supporting them in whatever they needed in their, you know, day-to-day duties. Um, I think what would be more appropriate is to not change who were the selectmen in the original plaque and on the construction sign that was posted outside the building for over a year. I think we should add something under that that honors all of our selectmen, passive members who have also contributed.
So if we, if we list this the way it is, the original, these are the three people who really sold this to the people of the town today. All of us who have come after them, have supported it, and when we've had to go back to town meeting for another additional money and debt exclusion. So they're saying, you can list some others, I don't have a problem with that, but I think the original committee should be recognized here. Now, like they did here, they list the actual present committee, and they list past committee members. So, uh, what we can say is, so, this is the committee, and these were the past committee members. If these are listed as the original committee, we can say, and succeeding board of selectmen members, dun, 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 dun. That way, those will be listed right up through, um, the current time.
Yeah, but we, we didn't do that for committee members, we did the current committee members, and we mentioned the past.
We didn't mention like, the one that Mr. Howland was on back in 2013. So it's even curious, exactly, I'm sorry to-
Yeah, no, we started the whole, uh, can I, you know, I've supported the, uh, the police station, but it was, there was Jack Taylor that convinced me to support the last time he came before the town, because I had hesitation, like a lot of people in town had hesitation, because we had been spending money, money was going off the rails for a little bit. Uh, so I think, I have to agree with you, that those to your name, Mrs. Cool's name, Jack Taylor's name should be-
From the construction.
Sure, but it should be some reference to, uh, former, uh, board of select, you know, board of selectmen. Or, or no names, just a, uh-
They can do past, past flag, past present.
And because I wasn't, I had nothing to do with it, you can say minus Cam Pachico, I don't, I don't care.
No, no.
Thank you, but I don't want, I don't, I don't need to get, other than voting to pay for it, uh-
The reason why, the reason why they listed as past committee members are because Mrs. Tweedy passed away.
I understand that.
And Mr. Howland resigned, but they were critical in the initial stages. So if you think critical in the initial stages, these were the three, Budweil and Tom Pius, Dean Cronin, and succeeding boards, uh, and succeeding, uh, board of selectmen members, and then add the other names as you feel they should be. Um, and I'm, I'm thinking, um, there aren't that many, let me think. Um, when I came back in fifteen, alright, so Dean was here. It would be Patrick Menjies, Nancy Gula, Brett Sagrafis, Jack Taylor. You're on the board now, if you don't want to be listed, I'm just saying you should be listed.
I don't think I need to have to be listed, my point is, I'm not sure we should go way back to the ones who started this. They had to be finished, I mean, they started it, and if the next time we took a vote on it, was the three that-
Well, I'm saying it because we're going to the original committee, that's why I'm saying it.
You're not, you're not, you're going to the current committee, and then you're going to the past committee, and then with, for selectmen, we're going to the selectmen who started the process.
But then it didn't-
Right, I'm content either we put the, uh, Jack Taylor, Brett Sagrafis, and, uh, Mr. Goulart, right. Or don't mention any names, just say the former and current, uh, board of selectmen. Uh, but I don't think we need to go way back to this.
Agreed.
I've never seen a public building project that you don't list the original committee, I gotta tell you in all honesty.
But we didn't.
We didn't do it on the construction sign, either.
Yeah, but that's, that was, that's a temporary sign.
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is a permanent plaque that's forever gonna be in the building, just like the one at DR, it goes back to nineteen fifty-nine.
We would not have had the police station if it wasn't for the last four weeks of events.
I, I totally agree.
And it was very close, and I was persuaded by one particular select president at the time. Uh, I know you all support this.
No, 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 no.
Actually, there were three votes, there were three votes. This was, this is the first committee, and then there was the second committee, and then there was the third committee.
Yes, no, I, I understand that.
And we're not naming on every committee.
Right, so-
Because it's just not possible. What I would say is, so I had a very pleasant, it's gonna sound like I'm taking us off topic, but I promise I'm not. I had a very nice conversation with-
First time you've done that.
I was like the king of that. Uh, I had a very nice conversation with Patrick Menjies, former selectman, Mr. Menjies, if you're watching. Um, and it was a very pleasant conversation, it was about reading communities, and I thanked him, not only in the town gazette article that ended up getting published, but I thanked him when I saw him, I was, you know, out and about. And he said, why are you thanking me? And I said, because I picked up the ball that you had started running with, and we got it over the finish line. And he said something to the effect of, you don't owe me anything, you guys got it done. And I think there is a truth to that, which is, yes, you always pay homage to the folks who started it, the giants on whose shoulders we stand, I understand that. And that's why I think they would be covered from the past and present sentence. And then you have the people who got the ball over the finish line on the sign. That's what makes sense to me. Personally, I really don't care if my name is on it public, really don't. But I do think there is a value in recognizing the work of the people who helped get the ball over the finish line. Selectmen Goulart was one of them, I was one of them, you've been one of them, and Selectmen Taylor was certainly one of them as well. And I think it'd be fitting to have their names on this plaque.
Uh, Mrs. Cool, how do you feel, uh, feel about having all the names?
I'm right, right now.
Past and present, uh-
What I'm looking at is selectmen, the three listed, and then underneath, because you're saying the selectmen, alright? Every board of selectmen that had to get up at one of those three meetings and support after you got a vote in the town meeting, then supported the debt exclusion three times. This is the first line, okay, in the football game, this is the first team. The second team came in, because the first team got injured. Second team jumped in, carried the ball down the field. They got injured, or disappeared, and then the third team came in. It was a joint effort of all three, so I'm looking at this saying, on the selectmen. And again, unlike a school building where you, you don't have that kind of turnover for the most part, they're pretty solid. Um, if you list Budweil and Tom Pius, Dean Cronin, and this would be in the order that they served. Uh, Patrick Menjies, Nancy Gula, Brett Sagrafis, John Taylor, and Kenneth Pachico.
Was Mr. Tanis involved?
Yes, yes, he was, and he would come in before Nancy Gula, Matthew Tanis.
I'm just trying to do-
No, I'd like to throw him in.
So we want to, of this stuff.
More important things in the plaque.
This, no, this is, this is important, and I, and I-
Budweil left, and Patrick came on.
And the public means the, no, that I, at the last meeting, I asked that the citizens of Dayton get recognized, and I, I like the-
But we gotta put something up there for that.
Made possible by the great citizens of Dayton, so that's how the plaque begins, without you, without your support, this wouldn't even happen, so. There might be some names on it, but we're also recognizing all the people who were paying the taxes.
A lot of Budweilers were left, and Patrick came on, Tom Pius left, and Matt Tanis came on. Matt Tanis left, and I came on. Um, who did you recognize?
Uh, Selectmen Menjies didn't run for reelection.
That's what it was, alright, so that's right, so Brett came on, and-
I just think there's too many, I just think there's too many names now, and it might just be better just to put, we thank all the selectmen.
And present.
And then just not have any names, because there's just too many names now.
Well, not really, because look at how much you got on the committee.
So what is the size of this plaque, do we know? Where are the margins?
Basically, here it is. Here's the old one that first came up.
I could have figured out the size.
This will be smaller because of the, the letter, the letter is gonna be small, and, um-
Three feet by two feet, this says, this is original.
So, three feet by two feet, that's a big plaque, so I think all the names, we're gonna have to fill up the space. What do we want to say, let's go back to the top, what do we want to say to the people of Dayton?
I like that it says, made possible by the-
Yeah, I actually like that.
Great citizens of Dayton.
I wouldn't change that.
I like that a lot. Did you find that?
I like that it's first.
That's how you said it?
I don't believe that's how I, you know, where, but I'm satisfied with it. I said something similar to that. Mrs. Cool had said something also very similar.
Uh, yeah, we talked about recognition, a possible-
So I'm content with that, we, we spent a lot of time on this.
I would only insert, citizens of the, of the town of Dayton. Town of Dayton, that's what we had inserted.
Okay.
Made possible by the great- "Made possible by the great citizens of the town of Dayton." Um, da-da-da-da-dun. So, we have...
Okay, so, what are we gonna do about the selectmen part? Because that's our only issue, everything else looks fine.
I say either no names or all the names.
I agree.
I think that's fair.
I agree, and it's, if, that's a good sized plaque. Two by three, that's a big, that's a good sized chunk, so it's not gonna be all squished up.
It's about the size of that, uh, bring ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all the names, same size, order of who, you know, when, when they came onto the board, I'm sorry, yeah. Do we wanna vote on that, so that we can send this to the, um, the building committee? Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the plaque for the new police station, uh, as reviewed tonight. Um, with insertion under the first line, citizens of the town of Dayton, that under selectmen, under those three listed, we include the succeeding selectmen up to and including Mr. Pacheco. Then accept all the other names as listed.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think it's nice they mentioned Mike Joyce.
Oh, and that's just gonna be Dayton Power, that's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, I remember that.
Yeah, that's nice.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Who wants this? Here's somebody.
Karen has, say two things, Karen.
Okay. First, under the banner of, oh, it's already nine thirty, we're gonna just keep this up. Vote to extend the contractual limit for the UTS contract.
UTS stands for Universal Testing Services, this is the bit about the police station that Mr. Pomroy started alluding to, and we said that's not ready yet to be discussed. Tom Gavin and I had a conference call with Mr. Pomroy, and he did explain that, um, when back in, uh, two thousand seventeen, the board, um, I was not here yet, uh, it was November twenty, two thousand seventeen, the board contracted with, um, Universal Testing Services in this amount of nine thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, and voted as such, and then being that not to exceed limit on the contract. This number was just an estimate, apparently, by Taylor, he was not sure, he didn't know that he were going to vote the amount, which is a little surprising to me, just because of course he would vote the amount. Uh, but anyway, and so he has in the budget for the building construction, twenty thousand dollars, kept processing as normal, and I just didn't realize that there was this limit. There is a twenty-two hundred dollar invoice charge, we did get those, we were the staff doing that, we didn't ask them. Um, this is what is owed right now, that, um, he's requesting that we, we extend the contract price by about four thousand dollars to cover these bills and any future.
But we're not asking those tonight?
Well, I am requesting that you act on it.
It's sixty-four hundred and four dollars if we go from ninety-five, ninety-six to sixteen thousand, is that what we're looking at? We went up to sixteen thousand?
Sixteen, he's requesting that the town amend the contract to not exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Because it was ninety-five, ninety-six, so it's sixty-four hundred is the additional loan.
And there's invoices that you just had, uh, that Karen just passed to you, that's what is owed right now, and these, obviously, the substantial data completion is Friday.
So, built into the four million something or other was this twenty thousand, and we only initially approved ninety-five hundred.
Yes.
Now they wanna go to sixteen, so it's still under the twenty.
Correct.
And this is not coming out of contingency, because this was already in the contract?
Yes.
Okay, um, I would make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second that motion.
To, should we increase the amount? To cover construction testing up to and not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, which represents an increase of six thousand four hundred and four dollars for construction testing.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, no questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda is to sign the contract for the transfer of this good year twenty nineteen local cultural council funds. Uh, this is a pretty, a pretty, uh, formal thing that we do every year, um, and this particular allocation is in the amount of five thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have the final, oh, Mrs. Braezy?
My, my concern is that I wrote this, uh, January ninth, and it says the contract should be signed, with a signature authorization form returning to me by November thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
In the period, it's July first of twenty eighteen.
So, I don't know why they...
We didn't fill that out, that's not our names, that's their, they, I'm assuming they took an old contract and missed the people, but yes.
We do do this every year. I can't particularly remember.
So, are they late since then, is that, is it normally?
I can't remember.
For us, time around.
Usually it's earlier in the year.
Yes.
There may have been, you know, that. So, I need a vote for an authorization for me to sign this.
I'll make a motion that, uh, the board of selectmen authorize, uh, Chairman Brett Segraffas to sign this contract for a local cultural council funds, this could be of twenty nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Mrs. Braezy, do I have to also sign this page as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alright, and next on the agenda this evening is a request from the Board of Health, compensation for degree. And I believe this is based on, well, first let me ask, this is something we'll be discussing tonight, as I recall. And this is, basically, we got correspondence from the health agent, uh, Mr. Todd Pilling, uh, well, this is really from the Board of Health, saying that the Board of Health respectfully requests the town of Dayton compensate health agent Todd Pilling for his postgraduate degree, see attached minutes and degree. And he does in fact, good for us, have a bachelor's degree from the University of Massachusetts. My question for the town administrator would be, is this that paid when Mr. Pilling started? And B, how much is the increase for this degree?
Um, I don't have that information right in front of me, I apologize.
Because I wouldn't be able to act on this until I have that information. And the other thing that I think we need to do, and I would suggest to the board that we do, is have the Board of Health come in and explain this, because it shouldn't fall on to our town administrator to have to answer questions about, you know, the logistics of one of the Board of Health Department's employees. I think it makes more sense to the Board of Health to come to us, explain, uh, why they're asking what they're asking, and then also come with those figures as well. I think that that's a reasonable thing. You would do this on this open board.
So, my question is, as Lady says, of his postgraduate degree.
It's a postgraduate.
No, yeah, it's a, it's definitely. I know that, I'm just saying that the letter says, uh, postgraduate degree, he's got a bachelor's degree, and the second thing is, in the job description thing for that position, it asks that the person have a bachelor's degree, so why do we, and behind him, I'm sure based on his degree, uh, so why are we not paying additional monies for that?
So, we're not paying yet, just, I just wanted to hear it from the request to do that.
It's not your request, I understand that.
So, if you go by the clerical contract, I'm assuming that's what he's, or the Board of Health is, is looking at.
But, but, can, can we back up? Mr. Pilling, the health agent, doesn't fall under the clerical contract, so why are we discussing the clerical contract?
So, this is exactly some of the problems that I've been trying to highlight, that we don't have this blanket coverage, I guess, for these types of people. These people that aren't in a contract, there's no personnel.
So, that ends up to us.
Right. There's no personnel bylaw to look to, uh, it's actually on my list for one of my goals for next year, to develop that, because it's, it causes more, I guess, heartache and, um, aggravation than I think anybody's really aware, because there's just always this question. I'm assuming that they are, I did not speak about this really with me, I'm assuming they're looking at the clerical contract, looking at the incentive amounts that are listed there, a master's degree is a little over four hundred dollars a year, if I remember. The stipulation is that it has to be related to the job function, and the job description is very important, it says preferred, I believe, on that, on that.
Yeah, either a bachelor's or five years' experience, or a combination of both.
I, you know, I gotta agree with Selectman Pacheco. First of all, I have concerns with doing this, just because of, it will lead to other employees who have even, who actually have postgraduate degrees, who would then be turning around, and have a good case if we did this, by the way, to say, "Why am I not getting compensated for my degree?" The other thing, and I think this was the Perry Mason moment, and I thank you for that, Selectman Pacheco, no, I'm dead serious about this, is, the expectation was that this person would have this degree, so it's not like an extra pot sweetening bonus, um, and Mr. Pilling does a great job, um, we are very lucky to have him, so I want that to be known. But I think this, in my opinion, looks a little bit like the, um, the ask is for something that was sort of an expectation that the town of Dayton already had.
One of my main concerns, and my first question really was, it's always, where's the money coming from, and is it what they did, and that's not what's appeared either? I would also welcome, I, I do feel very uncomfortable kind of having to answer for them when I'm having a...
And you should, and you should have to, and that's why, if we could, town administrator, and this is a little off topic, if we could, when, when we get a request like this from a board, that board, or someone, I'm not saying the whole board, someone should be coming in and able to answer the questions, that's all. I think that's a very reasonable expectation to have, because I really don't think it's fair to have you, you know, be answering all the questions about every single person that's ever worked for the town of Dayton, I just, that's not fair. So, that would be my aside on this. Selectman Blair, did you have any comments?
Well, my first concern is, they voted it in August of two thousand and eighteen. We went to a special town meeting in the fall, I don't know where the money is, number one, so I hope they got the money, so that if we do approve it, the money's there. Um, and really, this isn't for the town administrator to respond to, they're addressing the board of selectmen directly, okay? So, she wasn't contacted about this, so she shouldn't have to try to come up with an explanation.
No, I totally agree.
She's trying to do, she's pointed out areas where there are inconsistencies. I'm looking at this, having said about, this was August, did we appropriate money in the fall? Is there money in the budget if in fact this is gonna be approved? And I think, yeah, I think the Board of Health should meet with us on it. From a strictly fair point of view across the board, in the past, we have compensated other employees, even part-time employees, for degrees, even if they weren't required. And if they had a degree, the contracts didn't specify if it was a requirement of the job description or the requirement of the posting, or whatever. You had to present evidence that you had the degree from a, obviously, licensed educational institution, and that it could be used and was related to whatever the job was you get. So, I'm looking for additional information, I'm looking about funding, I'm looking for, um, again, the basis, and I'm looking to treat everybody fairly, which is, I think, what you're talking about, is trying to get your hands around, like, arms around a policy that regardless of what position you hold.
Exactly.
If there is a benefit for degrees.
Degrees, longevity, like, anything.
Yes, um, yes. We also know, we have people with degrees, um, that since we've rewritten, or we now have actual written job descriptions, we have people with, uh, degrees that are really not what we prefer, they're lesser, but we recognize them and we pay them for, so that's a whole other issue across the board, but I just want everybody to be fair, but yeah, we need more information on this.
I'm not, I'm not, I agree with most of what you said, Selectman Blair, I think it was very, uh, you hit the, hit the nail on the head. I'm not saying that the, uh, bachelor's in science is a requirement to be the health inspector, all I'm saying is, I don't look favorably upon Mr. Pilling, who is great at his job, having a bachelor's degree, because the expectation, not the requirement, the expectation was that the person who we ended up hiring would have a bachelor's degree of some sort, and so it's just not an extra thing that I think, you know, earns somebody extra compensation. Now, if Mr., I'm using him as the example, because this is the request he came from, if, if a health, if we got an application for a health agent and the person had, you know, a master's in public health of some sort, we, I would have a different response here tonight, because that wasn't an expectation that was specifically denoted in the job description, that would be a pot sweetener, that would be something extra, that would, uh, enhance the resume, so to speak, or professional, uh, viewing of that particular candidate. So, I just wanted to, you know, not being mean about it, I just think there was a certain expectation, as denoted in the job description, that person met those and exceeded those expectations, we appreciate that. For me, not a cause to then go and, uh, increase someone's compensation for said degree, that's probably the expectation.
Just, in terms of speaking, I don't believe the other health inspectors that we've had over the years have any degrees at all. And I will point out that this is a, uh, BS in civil engineering. This, this person sits on the stormwater committee and represents the board of health, because the person who's on the board of health is representing the planning board, and I can tell you, this degree in civil engineering has been a big help in stormwater regs, and the regs that we, the new ones we're trying to write, so, it's not, may not be for the health agent, but the, the work that this man is doing now in advising us on the stormwater committee, civil engineering is right over there.
I have to agree, um, it came in handy even today. We went out and visited a constituent for an issue that he's having, and, um, Todd was perfect in every way of being able to just identify the issues. So, I have to agree with what you're saying in the, in the stormwater, and I say this all the time, that this town is so much in stormwater, you're light years ahead of anybody else doing it, and so his, his ability, um, just totally helps us in so many ways.
And none of us, none of us on the stormwater committee have any, the stormwater committee makeup, uh, does, does not have any requirements on what your educational background must be. All we did was pick the major boards and our committees in this town that have some responsibility, one way or another, with stormwater, okay? I mean...
So, we need to have the board...
We need information, yeah.
Okay.
And, and we just gotta be fair.
Yep. So, moving on to review the mass housing letter regarding the Pines development, we did appoint Selectman Pacheco, as this letter points out, uh, to sort of oversee that process. This looks like more, just like a piece there. This looks like more just like a piece of their, basically, the zoning board of appeals is requesting copies of any documents that were provided to the town of Dayton by mass housing or the developer through the Pines forty B development process. Um, so, did we get anything else? I'm sorry, Selectman Pacheco.
Yeah, just for the public to know, this is our first forty B, uh, that's being completed. So it's completed and they have to have a review by the, uh, mass housing. They can't make more than twenty percent profit. The information that had before us or had was given a couple of weeks ago shows that they made nine and a half percent, which is a little lower than what the state would like to see because they're at risk, but it was a good, uh, developer there. So, uh, because this is our first forty B for the town, we have to be careful how we handle it. We want to establish a protocol, uh, for this EBA as well as the board of selectmen. So I attended a meeting, uh, last week and they had come up with a couple of things that they requested. And I would ask that the board adopt these requests. I can go through them if you wish. And we sent a letter to mass housing, uh, asking for, for example, in the mass housing, do you reference a, uh, a letter or a file dated September twenty seventh? We don't have that before us. So the, uh, ZBA would like to look at that as well. So we would need to look at that, see if it impacts the cost of the profit.
I have no problem sharing all of our information with the zoning board. I'm, I just, I guess I was confused why this would come before us because my expectation would be their entity, of course, we're going to share the information with them. But maybe you just weren't listening.
Yes, so, but we have to respond. This is directed, the letter from mass housing is directed to the board, directed to you specifically. So we have to respond to it and the attorney for these, our board of appeals to review everything that's here. More knowledge about this than, uh, any of us here came up with these requests. So I would ask that we adopt these requests. One of the requests is to ask for, to ask for additional time to review this because we're asking for some information. But for example, the, uh, the developer bought the project. The previous owners of this project had this, some of the infrastructure, uh, and they went badly up. This particular developer then bought the project. We want to know how much it costs, what cost before, you know, to put the road in, for example, uh, for some of the infrastructure, some of the, uh, for some sewage, for some of the, uh, water and stuff like that. How much did it cost that we can see if that had to be, uh, the profit? We don't, we don't believe it's gonna get to twenty percent. But we just have to be careful as to how we do this, especially since this is our first one, so.
I'm just confused, what, what, why do we have to adopt anything? Just, we, we can send them the information that they're requesting.
Send who?
Because like they're asking for a copy, anything that we have.
They're asking mass housing.
Right.
Marguerite's asking us to send a letter to mass housing with these bullet points, basically, and then request additional time to review the Pines closing letter.
And so they're gonna respond to this and give us the answers. We're gonna share it with the ZBA, they're gonna look at it again. Uh, when they're returning to see whether or not they've made more than twenty percent. Make more than twenty percent profit goes to the town. I don't believe that they're gonna make more than twenty percent. But we still have to, because this is our first, we have to let other forty Bs know that we're not gonna just, whatever figures they give.
Okay, so you need, uh, I'm like literally, I don't know why I cannot understand this tonight. I apologize.
Maybe I might explain it.
So, no, 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 it's okay. I was like just reading as you were explaining through the letter. So you need us to essentially allow you, I guess, to send a letter requesting misinformation about.
Mass housing wrote to us specifically, you as chairman of the board, said, hey, the Pines is finishing their development. This is the data that we've responded, or that we've reviewed. Here's our report, let us know what you think. We'll take your comments and stuff to such a date. So then Marguerite Mitchell came in and said, board of selectmen, this is what's going on with your project. This is what you should request. They're referencing, for example, they're referencing a report that we've never seen before. So she is, is requesting through selectmen Pacheco that you all go as a board to send a letter to mass housing requesting these four bullet items plus an extension to review and then, you know, show what we're seeing next.
That's what I just said.
So, are these four items, in addition to that audit report that I've already read?
Hmm.
That's what mass housing gave us in the report.
There's more information we want, so this is the rest.
Okay, for example, this report, they reference a figure for the affordable housing company it's owned for.
Okay, go ahead.
Or they sold three in twenty fifteen, three in twenty sixteen, three in twenty seventeen at different prices.
Okay.
So we can't just say.
So we don't have the whole package.
We don't have the whole package, so we're asking. Number one, we have to give it answer, oh, we're, they want a response by January thirty for us. That's a week away, so we're asking for additional time to respond to it, but then we're also asking for additional information. So those four items.
I have, I have.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion.
Hold on a minute.
That we
Thank you.
Send a letter to mass housing and request the four items that Attorney Mitchell has requested in order for us to have a complete report on the Pines and be able to respond if we have any further questions.
I will step down. Oh, sorry, did you want?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? I just wanted to thank Selectman Pacheco for his patience with me. It's really wrapping my mind around that, so I will shoot that.
Who will send the letter and just the application?
Uh, mine is fine, but that I will draft it.
And he can.
You guys have been taking a lot of stuff today though, so. I have no problems drafting this letter and then it would be from, it's, it's supposed to be from you?
It.
It's two words.
And she even requested a change.
We vote tonight to sign it, we can just come in and sign it when you say it's ready.
Exactly, whenever that is.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. My understanding with, uh, agenda item eight is that we no longer need to discuss that as that event will no longer be.
That's right, the event decided to, um, drop plans, uh, due to the poor timing for her, herself, so.
We do folks have three things under correspondence, as is customary. Now, I'm not going to read them except for the last one because I do think it's fitting. We received an email from the, uh, zoning board of appeals office manager, Nicole Skalison, um, last week and it says, um, good morning, as you may know, Chairman Bob Adams has stepped down at last night's meeting. As the board is down one member, they have requested that the VOS board of selectmen post the position. Um, and so I read that just to simply say, Mr. Adams, um, I served with you on my, uh, first ever board when I was on the zoning board and Selectman Pacheco was on that board at that time as well. Um, it's always been a pleasure to serve with you. Um, you are a wealth of knowledge and I am a better public servant being able to learn from you. Um, so I just wanted to thank you for all that you've done and probably will continue to do for the town of Dayton, so thank you very much.
Uh, that, that resignation is not effective until he submits it in writing to the town clerk. That's state law, so you can't post it. So, uh, Mr. Adams, if you're watching tonight or see the rerun, um, if in fact you have officially resigned from the zoning board, you need to just put that in writing and give it to the town clerk and she will notify the board of selectmen. And then we can, um, post that we have a vacancy.
And if I could just add that I was on the zoning board with, uh, Bob Adams, uh, for about fifteen years and his experience, uh, is going to sadly miss by the, uh, the zoning board of appeals. Uh, I know I want a lot from him and I hope he wants, uh, some from me. He was my, um, vice chair at one point and I think the town has lost a valuable asset. And I would hope that he continues to be involved, perhaps through the zoning board of appeals, or at least something, you know, that's involved in the type of town. So I know that I'm going to personally miss him, uh, and I appreciate all the work you've done for this town.
And, and, and my personal love, I just want to say to you, you've been around forever. I've been around a long time, but you've been around forever. I want to thank you for your service to the town of Dayton. And if there's any way you would reconsider coming back to the board, if you don't want to be chairman, the kind of experience and the work that you have done is invaluable, that we've lost, um, long time experienced zoning board members. And, and I'm taking nothing away from the existing board, but I, I think it's really important and if you can come back as a member, I would certainly welcome you back. But thank you very much for your service to the town of Dayton. I mean, I, I, as I say, I'm, I'm, like Mr. Pacheco said, um, you've been around a long time and I, I know what you've done for this town, so thank you.
So for announcements, I have the.
Oh, excuse me, could I just, this, I know we're not gonna read the, the public hearing for shellfish. I, I would just make a motion that we give a copy of this to the town clerk and ask her to post this because it is a public hearing that's going to be the thirtieth through thirty first of this month. And she just puts it out there on the town board, like she posts housing things to me. Um, and I think that's all we have to do is just put it out there.
I don't think we need a motion yet.
I think we can just.
Ask her to post the shellfish thing.
Okay, so for announcements, we have the Old Town Hall ribbon cutting ceremony this Sunday. My colleagues were part of the committee that helped to put that event together. It will be this Sunday, January twenty seventh, uh, from one to three P M. Public is welcome and encouraged to attend. And I have also been asked, uh, and hopefully we can get this on the agendas going forward, the Dayton Police Department will be hosting the jail and bail event on February twenty third, two thousand and nineteen, starting at ten A M. At the new, uh, Dayton Police Station and Communications Center.
So if you volunteered to, uh, to be arrested and you can't make it overnight, perhaps. You stay overnight.
You're just there?
Stay overnight?
Yeah, but the cell's nice.
They're gonna get me at bed. They're a little more patient.
What does the, what does the money go to?
Uh, local, um.
Local association.
But it does come with a mug shop and you go, you get.
For some, some of us, for some of us, we may have already been thinking about it.
It's already in the system. You don't go around here and you'll pop up.
I don't know what I touched tonight, but I got black stuff on my fingers and I can't figure out what it was. Maybe I've already been. If you then. And then.
I'd ask if we could read that quickly, let's put a change to the dates. What's that?
Oh, yes, I know what he's talking about. Yep, annual town election will be held April sixth, two thousand and nineteen at the Dayton Elementary School from seven A M. to five P M. Nomination papers are available at the town clerk's office on Wednesday, January second, two thousand and nineteen for the following offices listed below. The last day to obtain papers is five P M. on Wednesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Um, and the deadline to return nomination papers to the town clerk's office is on five P M. Friday, February fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. For your name to be placed on the ballot, it is necessary to obtain at least thirty-three signatures of registered voters, which is one percent of the total voters who voted for governor in the last state election. Chapter fifty-three, section six. Office assessor, three-year term. Dying role with regional school committee member to fill a vacancy, two-year term. Dying role with regional school committee member, three-year term. Parks and Recreation, three-year term. Planning Board, five-year term. Public Library trustee, three-year term. Selectmen, three-year term. Sewer commissioner, three-year term. Town clerk, three-year term. Town collector, three-year term. Town moderator, one-year term. Town treasurer, three-year term.
Do you hear two people?
Yes, one to fill a vacancy and one is the regular, uh, scheduled position. Thank you, Mrs. Brady. Um, and thank you to our town clerk. Next, under the agenda is selectings reports and we are going to discuss the MMA meeting and I'm gonna limit this to five minutes.
So I attended my first MMA meeting, I attended both days. Uh, they have, for the public, they have workshops that we can attend. I sent, I attended the open ceremony and I attended several workshops. The first workshop that I attended was on, um, the marijuana industry and the best practices for that. This was always high on my list of, uh, workshops to, uh, to attend.
Did you have that one last year? That's.
But did he pick up on the high?
Yeah.
The, uh, one of the things that they discussed is the host agreement. I want to compliment the town administrator for the great job she did on the host agreement. She touched everything that was supposed to be covered and did a great job on it and I was proud to sit there and say. Also addressed the, uh, the community impact fees that were, um, so we should be tracking that. We have, we could have a discussion on that, so we may want to set up hiring somebody because they would have to come out of that, uh, impact fee, hire somebody to monitor, that monitor marijuana that they're using in these places and so that we make sure that three percent impact fee is, right. I also attended another workshop on, uh, using zoning to age a place. Uh, the term that they use is that there's a senior tsunami that's coming, that to grow, uh, the biggest growth in demographics in a town. And I know that in Dayton, it's true because of a housing election plan that we'll see in a few weeks, is people from sixty and old and all, we think it's always the young, but it's actually, uh, people my age that is the biggest growth. So we have to figure out as a town that we need to change some zoning. Maybe address, uh, taxes because every time we talk about money, we can talk about increasing taxes as a result of something that we've improved. There are people who are fixated, kind of the seniors that have no opportunity to go out and get a traditional job or whatever, and we always have to, uh, take a look at that. We've done some projects in town, we've, we now have a firewall that makes it automatically get assessed for your apartment before you have to, uh, before the, uh, C B N gets variance. Uh, we've changed that. There's certain privacy you have to deal with, accessible for the building commissioner, obviously. We should also, it's a big concern of mine, is affordable senior housing. Uh, and I think we should be, uh, working on that as one of our, our goals. For about seven hundred attendees, there was a couple of other workshops that I attended. I did leave at three o'clock Saturday because of the snow forecast. And I was, uh, a little surprised at the number of towns that have five staff. We have three. I know that it came, uh, before the, the town, it's a kind of like a referendum. Uh, I'm not at that place right now, but people did give some justification why we should have a, uh, five-man board, so. I'm glad I attended, I'm glad that Mrs. Coolback encouraged me to attend this, this was my first one. And I will, uh, be attending future selectmen meetings and local meetings in the area, so. That's my commitment and I'll take the five minutes.
Pretty much.
Uh, I was there too and I'm gonna tell you, uh, I never ran into anybody I knew locally. Didn't see Mr. Pacheco. Um, I did see, I, I know it.
Yeah, and we attended, we attended the open ceremony. I didn't see, we didn't see me, but, uh, we definitely, we definitely.
I saw some, some officials from the area, but not from Dayton, uh, or not from the county. Um, I attended the opening, uh, ceremony, the, the, uh, speech, the governor, the lieutenant governor were there, they talked about stating, they talked about, uh, and I did mention earlier, we got preliminary cherry sheets and, uh, for some reason, and I'm gonna look into this, our cherry sheet shows a slight decrease in, uh, estimated, uh, aid for the coming F Y twenty, so we'll look into that. Um, I did attend a number of the, uh, booths at the trade show and picked up information, uh, Mr. Ferry wasn't able to go. So I picked up material for Mr. Ferry, uh, complete streets and some other, uh, issues, paving and new products, things like that. And, uh, I picked up a couple of bulletins that deal with the fire burning permit season. Um, talked to some people that I know because of stormwater. And I also saw people that are on the committee I serve on at MMA. So I was only there for Friday, uh, but I'm glad that Mr. Pacheco got to go. I'm always trying to get people to go and I find it very beneficial. It's, it's a good way to spend some time and see what's going on around the communities. And, uh, the other thing I will mention is that the town of Amherst actually went from a representative form of town meeting. They went from a board of selectmen, they went to a representative town and they're now a, um, town council form of government with thirteen members. The president of whom is the woman who hired me, Maest back in nineteen eighty-nine, and I did see her. So other than that, it was a great meeting.
I agree. I only went Saturday as I work Friday. Um, I had a good time, into the women's march after, sort of during, because I've been there before, to the MMA meeting. Um, but it was a really nice time, um, as it always is. And I love the trade show the most because that's where I get all the valuable information that I'm gonna go through throughout the year to figure out what the little projects are gonna be that market.
I will mention also that the legend that I went to for, uh, elected municipal women, the guest speaker was, uh, the Senate President Spinko. She's the third woman to hold that position. So that was, that was nice to see her do.
So moving right along to acknowledgements, we have an anonymous donation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to prime time. So moving right along to acknowledgements, we have an anonymous donation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to prime time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we acknowledge the receipt of an anonymous donation of one hundred thirty dollars prime time.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in, uh, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. The next thing we have on the agenda for acknowledgements, we'd like to acknowledge our, one of our newest Eagle Scouts. I think there's actually someone that was, uh, that did their quarter of honor after, Mr. Montosa. But I did want to acknowledge Jack Montosa on becoming an Eagle Scout here and his Eagle Scout badge. Uh, I was there, Selectman Blue was there and we got to say a few words and we got to speak to our state representative, Pat Haddad afterwards. Um, Jack comes from a great family. Um, his grandfather is a good person, very involved, you know, in local government. Um, and his family, they're just, they're very supportive. Um, Jack's brother was also an Eagle Scout, his older brother. Um, so they're a great family and we were, I wish I had gotten to eat, but, um, they had a lot of food, a lot of drink, they're a big family. Um, and it was just a very nice thing to be a part of and I always loved those. I know you loved them too.
Yeah, his project was the garden and the patio at the Aggie school. And he incorporated some, um, plaques that were on the school property sidewalk and they were, um, set into the patio, so very nice. Congratulations, Jack.
Absolutely. You earned it. And we will be doing, there were some, uh, we did find out, thank God, we went, uh, to this and we found, found out, Selectman Blue, correct me if I'm wrong, that there were a couple scouts who did earn their Eagle Scout badge, but they didn't have ceremonies. So, um, at a future meeting, not now, I will comprise the list and we would like to invite them just to, you know, recognize them. Yep. And next on the agenda, we have the Dayton Open Space Committee Grant Award. These grants are just rolling in now. We can't, we can't avoid it. So, um, I do want to congratulate them. Uh, they were the recipient of a two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollar grant to help with costs. Uh, this was from the Town Laborer's Leadership Council. Um, and, uh, it's regarding, uh, the funding for an appraisal and a title search of broad code property, um, for some sort of a conservation acquisition. I like what I'm hearing here. Um, so, that's fantastic. Good work, Open Space Committee, another grant. And this is, correct me if I'm wrong, town administrator, the first grant of two thousand and nineteen? Or was this?
Well, wait, uh, oh, it's been, it's.
That was twenty eighteen, that's the last day of twenty eighteen.
Yes, it's the first one.
All right, great. We've started off the new year. Congratulations, Open Space Committee as well, on all that you, uh, have done and are doing for our town. Um, the, so for this, we only have one set thirteen A of minutes to approve. The rest are accepting for review, so my friendly suggestion would be do the first one separate, do all the other ones together. So just say accept for review and then list the dates.
I want to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular selectmen's meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Um, I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Karen, did I give that back to you?
December nineteen?
No.
That's not from you, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not with any.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
I'm gonna have to stay because I haven't gotten back to her.
Opposed, abstentions?
Uh, I, I have stayed. I didn't get it back to you.
Yep, the ayes have it and that motion passes. Although, even if you get them back to her, she can't choose them now.
In that case, I won't know.
So I was just gonna say that, are you requesting for a delay of the vote or?
Yeah, I, I, we, I get, some of the minutes I have gotten, and so I'm working on the town report and that's when I realized stuff was missing. So I'm working off of what Mrs. Brady gives me and also my own write-ups because we got minutes missing. Um, and, uh, I, I, if I'm gonna make, even if they're just brand changes, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote to approve it.
So I think we consider this motion that if Mrs. Golda had an opportunity to look at the minutes, like, am I comfortable? She hasn't read the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
According to the.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so I make a motion to reconsider the motion just to make to accept the answer.
Um, I, I second it. I'll withdraw the second. And you withdraw the motion.
I withdraw the motion.
All right, so have we accepted them for review? We done that much?
All right, hold on. You actually did take a vote. It all happened at the same time and you did vote, so you do need to vote to reconsider. Then you need to vote to rescind that vote for the two minutes and then we'll talk about.
Okay, I make a motion that we reconsider the vote of accepting the minutes of December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I have a.
You have to do it because you voted in a prevailing way.
I want to make a motion that we reconsider, uh, the motion that we accept the minutes of December nineteenth, twenty eighteen, the regular selectmen's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we continue, uh, that we accept.
Rescind.
For we rescind.
You have to rescind your, your vote to approve.
I'll make a motion that we, I, that we rescind the motion, uh, we rescind.
The vote?
The vote, uh, to approve the minutes of December nineteenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
So Mrs. Golda will get a copy of all those minutes.
Okay, and then we have a bunch we need to accept for review.
I'll make a motion that we accept for review, the minutes of the selectmen's regular meeting of January, January ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Rejoining of our selectmen's meeting of January tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Which, which room is it?
That's the, the land meeting.
The plan, we have planning and zoning and.
Oh.
We just have that.
Okay, all right.
And we accept for review the minutes of October eighteenth, twenty-fifth, December sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. You guys used to meet every week?
Yes.
Uh, January third and thirty-fourth.
Why'd you go?
Twenty eighteen, uh, February seventh, fourteenth, twenty-one, and twenty-eight of twenty eighteen. March seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-eight of twenty eighteen. April fourth, eleventh, eighteen, and twenty-five, twenty-fifth of twenty eighteen. May second, May ninth, and May twenty-third, twenty eighteen, and June sixth of twenty eighteen. Hold on to something on the next page. Is there a second?
So, second, yeah. We can get all of this together?
Yes, I'll put your packets together.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Warrants?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant number twenty-nine A dash nineteen in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars, seventy cents payroll. Warrant twenty-nine B dash nineteen in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars, seventy-three cents. And warrant twenty-nine C dash nineteen in the amount of two thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars, sixteen cents. The last three being the counts payable be approved.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. All those first warrants were all dated January sixteenth. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants dated January twenty-third be approved. Warrant thirty-eight dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, thirty-seven cents payroll. Warrant thirty B dash nineteen in the amount of five hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred one dollars, sixty-one cents. Warrant thirty C dash nineteen in the amount of seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars even. Thirty D, who knows, dollars, who knows that?
It looked like that was a voice on credit.
Right.
So it washed, all right, yeah. So the net payment zero, okay. I, and warrant thirty D dash nineteen in the amount of zero, the last three being the counts payable be approved.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. We don't have any public, so I will.
What is this? This was the back of the package.
Those are the evaluations for UTS?
No, no, what is that?
It's from the Department of the Rappal.
It's, uh, evaluations, residential.
I have no idea.
Professional.
I would like to thank Cable for standing up.
Hi Julie. Thank you Julie.
A whole evening's day. We have some problems obviously with Cable and appreciate the work that he did.
Absolutely, and I'll approve this after you make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Thank you Cable.
Thank you Cable.